Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
We have some amendments to approve from our September ninth, two thousand thirteen regular session. And I will go ahead and move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nichols.
How they would attend had a nine one one call.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
First on the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. And then we have a public hearing to rezone property located at ten ten South Calhoun from R one, single family dwelling to R three B office and professional. I move we open the public hearing.
Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This evening, we have a request from the property owner at ten ten South Calhoun to rezone property. To cover the details of the rezoning, I will turn to Rita Jackson.
This agenda item concerns a request from Shirley J. Miller to rezone her property located at ten ten South Calhoun from R one, single family dwelling to R three B office and professional. The subject property is located along the north side of Boulevard between South Union and South Calhoun Streets. This property is currently listed for sale. The realtor has indicated that the persons interested in the purchase of the lot would like to see additional opportunities or flexibility for the use of the eastern portion of the lot. Notices were sent to nineteen surrounding property owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the request. City staff received no written or verbal communications regarding this request. At the September third, twenty thirteen Planning and Zoning meeting, the commission made a motion to make recommendation to city council to grant approval of the requested rezoning. As you can see on the board, we have a zoning map there which actually shows what the surrounding zonings are of the areas. Present here tonight, we do have the realtor, which is Tammy Gibbons, which is representing the Millers, and we have Mrs. Shirley Miller and her daughter Thama Fugate for additional questions. Staff recommends that council proceed with the advertised public hearing.
And you did not receive any comments from the neighborhood concerning the rezoning period? Was there any concerns by the Planning and Zoning Commission since we didn't get the minutes?
I just noticed that as I was flipping through, I'm sorry. There was not, they did indicate that if you would notice that that R three B, which is Presser Hall, which we had recently rezoned that, and they just had brought that up. So it would not be like it would be spot zoning or anything. And they were very favorable of the rezoning request. If you notice, on the lot at ten ten South Calhoun, there is a house which faces Calhoun Street, and the eastern portion actually faces South Union. And it was indicated they were looking for additional flexibility in what they could possibly put on the back half of that lot.
Do they have any interest right now?
I'm sorry?
Do they have any, I mean, here's where I sit on the situation is, right now, we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan. And one of the biggest, most glaring things we're dealing with in the comprehensive plan is the zoning of this city because it's crazy. Everybody on the plan, on the committee admitted it, even the people who are running it were like, you drive down there and you got houses, then you got bam, something that doesn't even fit. So I don't have a problem doing it, but I just wonder, is there something pressing that has, is there something on the line that we need to do this now before we can talk to those people, the comprehensive plan people, or?
It was actually presented to us, and we took it to Planning and Zoning. Like we said, the owners have indicated it was currently for use, sale, and they were just, it's a pretty big lot, and they were looking for additional uses for it. It was indicated it could be a duplex there, you know, multifamily, you know, it's not that it would be anything that would not be residential, it was just to have an option to be able to have an additional use for it. They are present here in the audience if they could. But it was something, as the commission had mentioned, that it was, you know, a usage that we had already allowed within the last year to, you know, office and professional. So it's not that it would be so much out of.
So could they build an apartment building there?
A duplex or multifamily housing more than, not more than a duplex because you, all the codes would still apply, but because of the size of the lot, you know, you're going to be limited anyway. So you're not going to be able to put anything there that's not, does not meet code for an R three.
So you couldn't put any business there, though?
No, you could put office and professional, you could have maybe a beauty shop or something in that line.
Any other questions, comments? Since it's a public hearing, is anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Yes, there's a gentleman in the back. Would you, would you want to come up to the microphone, please?
I would like to second what Councilman Williams has said and urge the council to look at, a comprehensive look at our zoning plan, not to give somebody some flexibility. Thank you.
Your Honor, for minutes, would you name?
She, she has?
Yeah.
Yeah, she has. Yes, Tammy.
We're not really just in the middle of a residential area. We are on a very busy street. There are very possible that there will be businesses less than a block away at some point down the line. So, like you said, we're not really spot zoning. We are next to other lots zoned with this same zoning.
If it was going to be, here's my concern, is that's all residential. Right now, it's all residential. And what this zoning would say, I could build an office building there, I could build a beauty shop there, I could build a lot of things there that do not fit into the aesthetics of that area, simply from the zoning. Now, I understand Presser Hall is R three B.
And then you have a brick plant another.
Yeah, down the road.
Block away. So it's not like it's all residential because it's a very busy, high-traffic road. The likelihood that somebody's going to build a house there is slim. So what will ever become, just an empty lot? Or is there a possibility that we could actually make something happen there, if not now, in the future? It is a good lot to be commercial on that particular road.
But we're not looking at commercial, right?
Well, not necessarily commercial, R three B, business and professional. We're not moving a industrial plant in there.
Do you have somebody on the line? I mean, my whole thing is, I sit on this committee, Comprehensive Plan Committee, and this is like the huge thing that we're dealing with because this city is just zoned crazy. And so I really feel like unless you, I mean, if you have something pressing right now, okay, fine, good, I'm all for you. But I don't understand the rush before we took it to them to see what they thought before.
Okay. I am a realtor, I work with three MACs on the move, and I am representing the family in the sale of their property. Every inquiry that we have had thus far has been for business purposes, not a one of them have been for residential. So, looking out for the best interest of my client with more options, it makes their property easier to sell. The chance of someone building another residential family residential home on that lot or any, in that three-lot area, is probably slim. So in the best interest of my clients, I'm looking for other options to make their property more sellable. It fits into the area, it's R three B on one side, a brick plant around the corner, it's not all houses. There's more there on that particular road.
I'm with you.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why there's a rush before we could talk to you.
Well, because we can't, a potential buyer who wants to put a business there can't rezone it before they buy it. It would be up to the family to do it. So they're taking the step ahead, making it more options. If I had somebody walk in today and want to put an offer in on it, any of the inquiries that we've had, they would only want the property if it were already rezoned. They don't want to buy a residential property for a business with hopes that it'll be rezoned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Rita?
Yes, I would just like to comment from the perspective of the Planning and Zoning Commission, just how the ordinance and the rules read it, they notify the property owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the requested rezoning. If so many people came in and voiced their opinion, yes or no regarding that, that's, you know, usually turns down the rezoning, or, you know, if it was spot zoning or something in that. But it usually represents the people that actually lives in that area, and nineteen property owners were notified.
And I would say this, the reason that I know about this and had this argument ready is because a lot of them came to me at work.
A lot of the nineteen people?
Including some of your zoning commissioner people came to me at work and were concerned about this, but they said it was rushed through the zoning meeting and questions weren't really asked.
I really don't think that that is a legitimate, I don't see how it was rushed through the, they are sent out their notices, they get the agenda, and the public comes in, and one of the questions. And then, actually, it has been, it's been in the paper for two weeks, and we actually, in the letters that we sent out, we asked for written or verbal communications, and no one has notified.
Do you send it to the address, or do you send it to the owners?
We actually sent it to the property owners. The people that actually live in the, this rental property, it actually goes to the person that owns the property. And lots of property owners within that area, some of them don't, they actually don't live in the area. But we have to send it to the person that actually owns the property, not if they're renting or something like that. But they do have the right, you know, to come in and.
No, I know. It's just like everything else we deal with.
But I just don't think it was a fair statement for them to say that it was rushed through at that meeting.
That's just what they, that's how I had this argument, or you can tell, I already had this argument ready to go because people had come to me and said, you know, this is what we deal. And their, their issue is this, they don't have a problem rezoning it, but what could go there is what the problem is. Because you just said a duplex, but then she just said it's going to be something business, commercial. Not so much commercial, but it's going to be business.
Now, I think sometimes what would help us too is when this, if the citizen comes to complain, if they would actually be directed, then we would have that information prior to us coming to the board meeting and presenting something, and it's thrown out at us after the fact because no one actually came in and presented it to us. I apologize for the omission of those.
So we followed the same timeline as far as if somebody applies, the time they send the notice out, the time they get it back, is all the info?
Yes, we have to, anytime we receive a request, it comes in, and the Planning and Zoning Commission meets the first Tuesday of each month, and you have to have a fourteen-day notice period to notify the property owners within that timeframe. And notices were sent out telling them when the meeting was, and they didn't have to be present, but they could verbal or written communication, and that particular day, we had no one that came in. We did, I did receive a call that was someone that just wanted to make sure that it was not, they was not in opposition, they just wanted to ensure that you were, we were not rezoning their property.
It appears to have been unanimous by the P and Z commissioners.
Yeah, they told me it was. They said, they asked a couple of questions. You've been here long enough, you know how it works. Just like with the community, they, they don't necessarily come here, they come to us. It's going to happen now, it's going to happen, so let's just go with it. Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Rita. I move we close the public hearing.
Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have a public hearing to consider a change to sanitary sewer use charge rates, and I move to open that hearing.
Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes, to cover the details, we will turn to Roger Haynes.
As already mentioned, this is a public hearing to consider a change to the sanitary sewer use charge rates. The notice of this public hearing was advertised in the Mexico Ledger on August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, which met the thirty-day requirement as required by the Department of Natural Resources. This hearing is for purposes of discussing a rate increase proposal as follows. Our current rate, based on one thousand gallons usage, under the user charge portion is one dollar per one hundred cubic feet. The user charge portion would change to one dollar and ten cents per one hundred cubic feet. The capital charge portion is currently four dollars and seventeen cents per one hundred cubic feet. That would change to four dollars and fifty-nine cents per one hundred cubic feet. The base rate per month is currently seven dollars and forty-two cents. That would be changed to eight dollars and sixteen cents. This is roughly a ten percent adjustment in rate. An example, monthly sewer fee based on the usage of five thousand gallons per month is currently thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Under the proposed rate change, that would go to thirty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. As a background for the public, roughly five and a half years ago, the City of Mexico retained the engineering services of Horner and Schiffern out of St. Louis to complete a capital asset analysis and facility plan on the city's wastewater treatment operation. In April of two thousand nine, Horner and Schiffern made a presentation to council on their findings and recommendations. The study clearly revealed that our aging infrastructure, industrial pretreatment program, and modifications to the regulatory requirements mandated by the Department of Natural Resources for affluent limitations created an immediate need for an upgrade to our existing wastewater facilities. The facility plan outlined an estimated twelve million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in capital improvements, with the initial Phase One estimated an investment of five million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, with the remaining facility, infrastructure improvements being made through succeeding phases. Following Horner and Schiffern's presentation, Municipal and Financial Services Group reviewed with council a multi-year financial projection of wastewater rates required to cover costs associated with operations, maintenance, and upcoming capital projects of the wastewater treatment plant. In August of two thousand nine, voters approved through a bond election sewerage system revenue bonds in the amount of sixteen million dollars, and that did pass overwhelmingly. That same month, with applicable public hearings and voter approval for issuing revenue bonds, city council approved by ordinance an amendment to change sanitary sewer uses charges, allowing for the funding mechanism to get needed capital improvements underway. With council's approval, staff moved forward and secured the bond financing in the amount of five million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand for Phase One and five million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand for Phase Two. As council is aware, Phase One is complete and Phase Two is nearing completion. In keeping with the ten-year financial projection being presented to council and the public, a scheduled sewer rate adjustment is required to provide adequate financial resources for debt service and continued improvements to the wastewater treatment facility and collection system. In addition to the rate adjustment for those residences and businesses connected to the city's collection and treatment system, it is important to establish a rate and user requirements for those persons or entities that transport waste from outside origin to be discharged into our sanitary sewer system. Therefore, a waste approved to be discharged to any public sanitary sewer which has been removed and transported from a cesspool, septic tank, some storage tank, sewage treatment plant, or industrial facility shall pay a fee of five cents per gallon with a minimum charge of twenty dollars. And that dumping could not take place until it is approved by the plant superintendent for the wastewater operation. Staff recommends that council proceed with the advertised public hearing.
Do, do we have a lot of, of that, that you mentioned, that last paragraph? Is there a lot of, a lot of transfer waste?
It is actually, it's fairly infrequent, but when it does come up, we want to be able to turn to an ordinance to show that, first of all, they can't dump anything into the system without the city approving it, and that we have a set rate. So frequency, not high at all, is when we number our basis for when it does occur.
So this is new, or has been?
This would be, this would be added.
Added.
Do they have a sewer dumping station at, like, Lakeview?
They'd be like for camping?
Yeah, we still run, it's only open when we have a camp post present.
They'd be charged on that, too, then?
That's within their daily camping fee. But, you know, Chad's got some securities out there so that when the camp post is not there, someone can't just come in and utilize it.
Other comments, questions? Choose. On personnel, we have an eight percent increase in just payroll. Did we hire somebody, or what's going on there?
Actually, on our payroll, there's a couple of things that are based in there that we wanted to cover. First of all, we do have an employee that will, is looking at retirement. That particular position, the individual works in the lab, we may need to have, when we make a new hire, we may need to bring them on in advance so that we can have someone trained for those lab functions. And that would be a fairly insignificant part of that estimate. The largest increases would be in the area of health insurance.
Well, this is not for health insurance, this is just payroll. You're looking at a thirty-two thousand dollar increase in payroll over this year or last year, not, healthcare is separate on here, so.
Okay, so you're looking at item.
I'm looking at payroll, yeah, just big pay.
On our payroll, we actually had an individual at the wastewater treatment plant that was out for a considerable amount of time serving their country this past year, or out country. So therefore, we did not have any pay at that time. So now they're coming back into the system, and they're back to work now.
Okay. And then, over time, I see we got a over ten percent increase there. Are we expecting a lot more?
I'm hoping that will not be the case. At the time we were developing the budget, it would depend on how much additional training might be required for running the digester system, and then also coverages that we might need during the weekend in checking out the plant.
Are there any comments from the public? Since this is a public hearing. Any comments? Okay, thank you, Roger. I move we close our public hearing.
Second.
Fox.
Yes.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes. Miller.
Under old business ordinance this evening, we have bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-two, an ordinance approving the two thousand thirteen dash two thousand fourteen operating and capital budget. This is up for second reading by title only in passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. The public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance was held at the last council meeting on September ninth. Since then, we have had no additional comments. We did also submit the public hearing a outline of the entire operating budget and capital budget for the year. Therefore, counsel, unless you have any additional questions, we recommend you proceed with the second reading by title of the passage of the ordinance approving the budget for next fiscal year.
I move for reading bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-two.
Second.
Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-two, an ordinance revising the budget for the City of Mexico, Missouri for the fiscal year October first, two thousand twelve, to September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, inclusive and adopting the budget for the fiscal year October first, two thousand thirteen, to September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, inclusive appropriating the funds allocated to various accounts and authorizing the expenditure of such funds by the city manager and other officials for the purpose indicated. I move for passage of bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-two.
Second.
Fox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Under new business resolutions this evening, we have bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with various organizations for requested funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This evening, as part of the tourism tax, we do have three requests for funding. And to cover the details of the requests, I once again turn to Roger Haynes.
The Mexico Tourism Commission last met on September eighteenth, and during that particular meeting and the meeting prior, they did discuss funding applications and recommends to the Mexico City Council the distribution of funds as follows. The Mexico Tourism Commission would be the organization, and it is funding to do advertising in the Missouri Life publication. The amount requested is eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, and the amount recommended is eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, and that would be for fiscal year two thousand fourteen. The Mexico Tourism Commission, again, as the organization, wants to have their advertising booth in the Heart of Missouri Tourism Center, which is located at Kingdom City. The purpose, again, is for advertising, the requested amount is twelve hundred dollars, the amount recommended is twelve hundred dollars, and that is a constant fee from previous years. Presser Performing Arts Center had a request for the two thousand thirteen Christmas season production. Again, the purpose is for advertising, the amount requested is fifteen hundred dollars, the amount recommended was one thousand dollars, and that would be a two thousand fourteen fiscal year expenditure. The Heart of Missouri Tourism Center, that would be a two thousand thirteen fiscal year expenditure, we would actually issue the check on that tomorrow morning and send it off. One thing I do want to mention about the Missouri Tourism Commission's request on Missouri Life publication, in the current year, two thousand thirteen, the commission, we expended ten thousand, two hundred dollars for advertising in the magazine, and this year, the request is for eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. But they are expanding the program to, for additional publications in the fall, travel guides, and then also expanding their presence in the Missouri Business Journal. So it will be before many more readers, of course, in the state of Missouri and outside of the state. Staff recommends that council concur with the Mexico Tourism Commission's recommendation and proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. I'd be glad to answer any questions. We do have with us tonight a couple of members of the Tourism Commission, Jeanne Vogel and Shilla Bakka, and we also have with us their sales rep for Missouri Life, Mike Kellner. Should be any questions specific to the meetings or Missouri Life.
Roger, the second one, the twelve hundred dollars for the Heart of Missouri.
Roger, the second one, the twelve hundred dollars for the Heart of Missouri Tourism Center, that is a two thousand fourteen expenditure?
That will be a check for two thousand thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yes. And it is budgeted.
Didn't they expand the territory a lot for the Missouri Life last year also?
When Missouri Life comes and does a presentation before the commission, they, of course, look at the proposal as far as how much bang they can get for their buck. And it was expanded slightly, but this year, the expansion of the market they're wanting to hit is much wider. One of the major impacts is getting into the Business Journal, which sends out several thousand publications in itself, which will hit a different market group.
I thought one of the selling points last year, they were going to spend as they spend the work place.
They use technology more as a way to get information out last year as far as your Twitters or your Facebook or the emails, things like that. People could actually, in previous years, get their magazines in hard copy, but last year, if I, correct me if I had it in state, Mike, that they could also get it over the international.
Yeah, last year, we expanded, like Roger said, mostly the digital component of it. So we added you to our website rotation and the advertising. Also, our electronic newsletter, which goes out to about seven thousand. Actually, we're up to, at the time when I spoke to the Tourism Commission, we were doing that twice a week now. And last year, we only did it actually, or twice a month. Last year, we did it once a month, so we'd expanded to, now we're up to weekly. So we'll actually include an advertisement in that at least once a month for you for the new proposal. But also last year, in addition to that, and like Roger said, it also included some shout-outs or Facebook posts to our followers on Twitter and Facebook. We also threw in an extra page, value-added, additional full page of advertising that we threw in last year. So all that still holds for this year or for the new proposal. And in addition to maybe a little clarification on what Roger mentioned was, we are doing some, what we would call a combo publishing or some inserts into our other publication, Missouri Business Magazine. And that does, actually goes out to about thirty thousand readers across the state. Primary target is the, kind of the top thirty thousand business leaders across the state. We have two pieces of that that would make sense for Mexico. We have other pieces to it that are more business or economic development, but we do actually have a couple tourism-oriented pieces that go into that. And one is, we're doing a travel guide that will be in the February issue. So it not only appears in Missouri Life magazine, it also appears in the, that'll be the February issue of Missouri Life, the March issue of Missouri Business Magazine. So this is new in additional, as well as an additional five thousand copies of the insert. And if you look in the Missouri Business that it gave you and also the August issue of Missouri Life, you'll see an insert in there that we did in August. And that's what we're really talking about. It's like a pull-out piece. So it looks like this. So it's actually inserted into the magazine. So you will have, and actually, if you look at this, there is a, we actually were able to accomplish this even in the, even though you didn't have funding for it. Last time, I got additional funding through other sources to get that into this. And if you, and maybe at your leisure, you can look through, here it is. We put an extra full-page ad in that actually highlighted the War Back in Time event. So this is what we're talking about for extra, would be inclusion into this piece that would appear in actually four issues. So two issues of Missouri Life, two issues of Missouri Business Magazine, as well as an additional five thousand each time of the insert, which would be distributed through, the primary distribution will be through the Missouri Department of Tourism and a partnership we have with them and through their welcome centers, as well as other, you know, tourism-type venues. And the way that fits into the whole plan is, since it is, we do offer some special rates on combo buys. So if you had to go out and buy both magazines, this is about a forty percent discount off of the open rates for both magazines. And we're talking kind of the two issues of Missouri Life, two issues of Missouri Business. The rest of the year will be business as usual, the full-page ad in Missouri Life, plus we are still throwing in that value-added page at no charge. So you've got, you know, that also that you can use at any issue of your choice, as well as all the digital media we mentioned before. So clear that up. And for last year, we had two things. We gave you the value-added, we gave you the digital, but we only went up, we only charged you our regular rate. So we, you know, so some of the price increase last year was due primarily to a rate increase.
I will that council be aware of, when Mike came and did his presentation to the Tourism Commission, what ended up being struck as far as the number of ads and the types of ads end up being better than what we had initially started. So the commission was sensitive for trying to get the most value of the dollars spent, especially since the dollars that they're recommending is up from the prior year.
I would ask, I would say this about Missouri Life. I think it's a great publication. I went through my whole last year worth of, worth of magazines and nobody, no town our size except Fulton, none spends this kind of money in Missouri Life. Nobody. Nobody had full-page ads. Nobody, you had your St. Louis region, your Kansas City area, you had the Lake of Ozark, Branson. Of course, those are tourist places. Of course, you're going to be, you know, there. So we're expanding on that, but, you know, I've always asked, how do you know we're getting any bang for our buck? And so I asked you before the meeting tonight to give me the revenue. Revenue is pretty much flat. We're not growing. So I would assume if we're going to spend a quarter of our budget on something, on one thing, that that would draw people in to increase our revenue, correct?
Correct, similar to like Miss Missouri.
Yes, but, but the numbers don't bear that. So why, so why do we, so why are we increasing, why are we doubling down, should you say, on something that, when you look at these numbers, is not panning out? They're not drawing the people. You know, as a matter of fact, when we first started this, there was fifty thousand dollar revenue. Now, last year was forty-four. So if anything, we've gone backwards, but we're spending tax revenue now.
The revenue, first of all, a clarification on the revenue through the lodging. That can really have some fluctuation based upon construction. When MMA was being built, revenues were up. When Walmart was being built, two thousand four, two thousand five, revenue was up. We've had the construction here with Pearl Moser and Mosers. A lot of those contractors, they're coming in and they stay, they stay here. So you'll have some fluctuation in that regard.
And I, and I get that, but overall, if you average this out, if you took these, what's this, eight years and divided it out, added it all and divided it out, you're going to basically have what we had last year.
Yeah, I did the averages, actually. For the eight-year timeframe, our expenditures are within about two hundred dollars a year of our revenues, which means the commission is doing a really good job of balancing and yet they do have a fairly good reserve. Now, we do have with us tonight two members of the commission that have expressed at the meetings that they have customers that come in to do lodging that specifically mention this magazine as to why it brought them to town.
I don't doubt that at all. My question is, the amount, how much is, how much is the tax?
Three percent.
Three percent, and I would say probably an average hotel room in what, Mexico is what, sixty dollars? That's probably pretty average. So if you took. So would you say almost twenty thousand hotel rooms are rented by this magazine a year in Mexico, Missouri?
Well, I'd have, you know.
I wouldn't say that.
Well, we'd have, in all actuality, not to be in any form argumentative, can you come up with that computation with any of the things that are supported? What the commission is trying to do is to promote Mexico. Counsel did ask in the past for them to look at other venues that would get something besides in the local newspaper, the ad finder, the radio, which are all good, but we wanted to get something that would market all of Missouri and even outside of those borders. They did look at potentially, and you'll see one year there, the expenditures were only twenty-six thousand dollars. And that is because they did look at one year at possibly billboards. But what they found, when you put it in a high presence area like I-70, we were going to spend basically the same money, if not more, and it would be stale-dated so easily. So then they basically backed off of that notion because of the fact they weren't getting as much exposure over the length of time as they were through this particular media. And that doesn't mean that there might be other avenues to get the word out about, about Mexico. From what I'm gathering from the commission, this is the best they've found of this particular.
Well, I would, it's nothing against Missouri Life. I think it's a great magazine. I think, it's just the level of commitment we have. I mean, we're not Branson, we're not Osage Beach, we are not St. Louis, we are not Kansas City, but we are spending on par with those areas. We do not have, I mean, I don't know why, we don't have that much of a tourism. Nobody says, oh, what are you really known for and go to Mexico? People go to Branson, people go to Osage Beach, people go to St. Louis, people go to Kansas City, you know, and so we're basically just doing events. And I would say, like, the one thing that I really noticed is we did the, they did the all-city garage sale. And that had no advertising but Facebook, and this town was flooded with people. Anybody who was out that day would know that. So we're spending over a quarter of a budget for something that we can't really see any, any need for. I agree that they bring some people, but do they bring that many people? I just don't think so. I don't think we double down on it. I think we advertise in them. I do. I just don't feel that we just add more. And, and we haven't looked at anything else. We asked last year at this council, these same members asked them to look at different stuff this year. Did anything get bought up? Not that I've heard of. We just went right with the same old thing. So to me, it's almost like, well, you know, we hear you, but we don't care. So, I mean, that's just my opinion on it, so I won't bother you anymore, but I won't be supporting it either, so.
Could I make another comment or two? First of all, I understand your point about the lodging revenue. But actually, according to the State Department of Tourism, the revenue for Audrin County and tourism is almost eighteen million dollars. So you're not taking into account any of the other tourism codes, industry codes that do bring in tourism revenue. And I would guess greater or less client share of that does come to Mexico. So when you really look at that, you're, you know, the budget, the amount for Missouri Life is about one-tenth of one percent of actual tourism revenue for the county. And again, I realize we're talking city of Mexico, but again, I think you get the greater share of that. Overall budget for the tourism is about two-tenths of a percent.
But the hotel motel, but this tax is to grow our hotel motels. This tax isn't about, we're supposed to be doing events that are going to be bringing people into town to stay. So I'm not looking at the big number. I'm looking at my hotel motel revenue. So, yeah, people are coming to town, but they ain't staying in town.
Yeah, but there's.
And how much of that is?
Above and beyond the lodging is my point, so.
Well, they come through, they go to the lake and they come through to see certain events and, you know, I get that. But it's a big chunk of our budget for one, for one item.
Yeah.
That we can't really see a big bump.
Well, the other thing, and I'll just mention, is that our audience is a great fit demographically, and I think you agree with that, for, for the city of Mexico. So when you do spend the dollars with us, you're landing on the right people without wasting dollars on, say, a wider broadcast media such as, and I'm not picking on radio or anyone else because they all have their place, but, you know, if.
And I, and I, and I agree with your magazine. I think it's a great magazine. I look forward to getting it every month. My question is really, why are we spending on par with cities that have destinations to go to? And like I said, when I went through the whole year, the only city that did it was Fulton.
Well, you failed to mention Marshall, Missouri. I think they're very similar to you guys. They're in every issue.
They're in every, there's several there in every issue. I'm talking about full-page ads, every issue.
They're in a full-page every issue.
Well, I didn't see Marshall in there. I saw him in there, but.
Yeah, so.
Well, even if I give you there, there's two out of how many cities that have ten thousand people in Missouri.
Well.
So I'm asking you, what would you, I mean, tourism draw? What makes Mexico better than Liberty or Moberly or Hannibal? I mean, Hannibal doesn't even spend that much money and they definitely are a tourist, tourist area.
Well, in, you know, I can't speak for Hannibal other than I know there were some challenges over there. They're also in my territories, so I'm familiar with them as well, so that have really nothing to do with what we're speaking about here. You know, again, I would just go back to who are you reaching and what do you want to accomplish? Our readership index is high against the national and state averages in cultural and heritage tourism events, agri, tourism.
I don't doubt your magazine.
Entertainment, so, you know.
I'm just saying, if we could probably get almost, we did less a couple of years ago and our lodging was up. So, I mean, yeah, that could have been somebody in town or what have you, but I think we need to be in your magazine, but could we use that, the rest of that money to do something else in the city, to promote events in the city, to attract people?
Well, and again, I can't speak for your decisions, but, you know, I do know our audience. I do know that your advertising dollars with us are landing on the right people. It's money very well spent. And again, very, very little. You don't have any dollars laying on people that don't have the interest or the money or the mobility to come and visit Mexico, so.
Okay, any other comments from the council members or?
Are there any members of the committee who'd like to?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Williams, I just, I, when you spoke about, my name's Jeanne Vogel, part of the Tourism Commission. But we were speaking at the, well, I can speak all to you, but we were speaking at the Tourism Commission about what are we doing with these dollars that are bringing people to stay in Mexico? And this is my first year in the commission. And I think we need to look at that deeper because we've come up with a lot of requests for funding, other than these three that are before you tonight, that we're thinking, how is this promoting Mexico? These people are staying outside of the city limits till midnight and then they're leaving. They're not, you know, how do we prove that these people are benefiting Mexico by staying here? And I don't know if there's an answer to that. I don't know, without some big survey and a lot of money spent. Because there's a lot of things on here, car shows and guilds and, and we, they want a large amount of money and we'll, we'll cut it down to half of what they're requesting. Or they didn't get it into us in time with, according to our, the way. or they didn't get it into us in time with, according to our, uh, the way we present. So we are looking at things like that. Um, I don't know what the answer is, though, because, other than, you know, these big events like Miss Missouri, and, you know, like Mexico Young Farmers, you know, they're having, uh, an event out at the Four-High Center, the Fairgrounds, and, and how do we know that's bringing any people here? We really don't? And that's my concern, when you have a, a budget like this to spend forty-two thousand dollars, because we're getting more and more requests. So how do you decide who is actually bringing people to stay in Mexico? And I don't know, I don't know. We've kind of mulled that over in our group, and we can't, uh, so we're, we're kind of thinking the way you're thinking, how do you prove this money is bringing people here? Because a lot of the events are right here in Mexico, and they're, and it's, uh, the money is spent on locals.
I can tell you...
Locals.
And I can say this from business, um, you look at the J.C.'s, the Soybean Festival, we did a ton of business, ton of sales, ton of sales tax for the city. We did, you know, the Young Farmers, ton of business, ton of sales tax for the city. Um, but I can also tell you, most of those people didn't stay here overnight.
That's what our concern is.
Um, they're from the local area.
Right.
You know, it may be even Columbia, or so have you. Um, so I don't know either what the answer is to that.
Because we get that three percent tax.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where a good portion of the budget...
And that's how you grow, that's how the commission grows, is to get people to stay in hotels.
Right.
And so we need events they're gonna, and see, I think, like, walk back in time, I think when it first came to town, a lot of people stayed in hotels, but I think more and more you're seeing the people stay there.
Okay.
Then you're seeing, you know, come in. And we've also noticed that our revenue is down from our back in time. It's not because there's less people here, I think it's just more people just stick right there in the campground, and now you have all these vendors that are there.
Right, and they're staying there.
And so they're staying there, and they're not getting out in the community at all, versus what they used to.
So it's an issue we've talked about, and always the new person always starts asking a lot of questions.
So I don't, I, you know, and I think it's great you guys are doing the magazine. I think it's a great magazine. I just, we're just spending more money on it, and I'm like, it's kind of hard to, to wrap my head around, we're spending more for something we can't really...
And, but then if you look at, uh, a quilt guild, I don't know, I, you might not have these notes, but every other year, four hundred dollars in two thousand eleven, and nine hundred and eight, and thirteen for the quilt guild to advertise their quilt guild. And it's a nice event, you know, it's a very nice event, and a lot of people attended it, but did anybody stay in any of our lodging areas?
Probably not. Maybe a couple, but that's kind of why I threw that number of rooms, because that's a lot of rooms to pay for this one thing, and I'm...
So I just, I just wanted to add that it's not just a discuss, general discussion.
I, I'd like to make a comment. I, uh, I chaired the committee twice to pass the tourism tax. And the tourism tax, uh, well, we brought that to this community so our organizations would have a way of promoting their events in this community. I don't think we ever said that they had to bring, uh, people to stay in our hotels. I mean, that's a byproduct of it.
Okay.
But the thing was to bring people to Mexico so they would spend their money here. I don't care if they come and stay two hours, if they spend two hundred dollars at our store downtown...
That's not an issue.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so that's not an issue.
So I think we've lost focus here...
Okay.
About what the tax was about.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I agree, we need to have people stay in our hotels. If they stay overnight, they spend more money. That's a great thing.
Sure.
But we also have to have them come here and spend money here, and it's, you know, it's, it's fine. And so you guys are doing great work. I sit in on your committee meeting the other day, a couple...
Makes sense, I don't know, I was kind of focusing in on...
Well, that's important.
Getting people to stay here.
Don't, don't lose focus of that. That's important, too. There's two sides of that. There's people coming here and spending money and staying two hours or a day, and there's the other side of it where people come and stay overnight. Obviously, we'd like them to stay overnight, because they spend more money, but we'll take the other side of the two, so, thank you for your work.
I think that would lead to a discussion on what we should do with the tourism tax, because do we focus more on, but, I mean, the Soybean Festival draws, I mean, this year, I, I mean, that thing was crazy. Okay, we, we made, this city made a ton of money on sales tax, if my business is any indication. Um, look at, you know, events like that. So do we focus more on events like that, or do we focus more on drawing people from out of the state? Because those events, you can see they, they bring a lot of people and a lot of money in our community. So is that where we focus, or not? That's, seems to be where the debate is here, is do we focus on just trying to get people to town at any cost? You know, if that's the case, then maybe we should focus more on individual events here in town, because they draw a lot of people into town. And not just people from Mexico that come out and spend their money, but, you know, Vandelia, LaDonia, Kingdom City, Fulton, and those are people that, you know, they're coming here, and they're for a day. So, I think, I think you bring a, a nice look at this, and maybe that's what we need to do, is decide, you know, what's more important.
Yeah, and, and that might be something that we have the committee, or the Tourism Committee, look at over the next twelve months, and since they brought us a plan here, we'll, we'll take this now, and then maybe next year, take another look at it, and, and I, I somewhat agree with the discussion, that maybe we, we're spending too much of our budget, uh, you know, twenty-five percent is a pretty good chunk of it on just one item, but, uh, you might have them, have them look at that.
I'd like to say something. I think one of the things that, that's coming to my mind is, events are great, they draw a bunch of people. Here they are, then they're gone. Uh, you can only have so many, I mean, not, not only have so many, we only do have so many events. But I think that when you have something like a presence in Missouri Life, there are going to be a, a number of people that are just looking for a destination, they're just looking for a place to go. And they're going to come in and, and, and see what's here, they may go to the Historical Society, to make, you know, any number of, of, yeah, we're not, we're not, uh, huge tourism draw, but I think that, uh, another thing is, it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. If you get people coming and looking for things, and that, then you'll have those who rise up to, to create them and to promote, uh, more tourism. So, I like the idea of a presence out there on an ongoing basis, and I think that a few years ago, that, that was looked into, you know, what else is out there? Is there something better? And we don't need to stop looking, but I think at this point, Missouri Life is, as far as the committee's concerned, rose to the top, and I think that's why they're making this recommendation.
Uh, Mayor, I have just to add that I think it would be good for us to have options. Um, perhaps, and I don't know, sir, whether your company will allow that or not, but various levels of advertising are, uh, rather than just, maybe just one package deal, but whether we maybe could go a little lower in, in our expenditure and still maintain some presence in your magazine. Uh, I, I know of no other alternative right now. Uh, we have a resolution in front of us, and, um, I know these, these three are asking for the money because they need to, to start the promotions, and so, um, I really would support going ahead with the Missouri Life offering at this time, uh, this year, but in the future, I, I think we're probably going to need some options to look at.
Yeah, we did present, uh, three options to the Tourism Commission, and this is the one that they felt was best, and quite frankly, I agree with it. We did submit one that was more, and the one that was basically a little, a little less, and kind of on, online with the level that we did for the 2013 fiscal year.
That's why we have a commission, and we're very proud that we do, and we, we do appreciate their work. But, uh, it may be next year, if you're still inclined to come visit us, that you might give us a little bit of more range.
We can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Anyone?
Okay, we'll have to vote on these individually, because I'm going to have to stand on one of them, so... So, I move that, uh, we advertise in the Missouri Life publication, uh, at eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, if I might, a point of order, I think what you have before you is a resolution.
Yeah.
Now they vote.
Right. All or nothing?
Yeah, you got a resolution before you on these three recommendations.
Well...
They're not split out.
Okay, well, I can't vote on...
Unless you want to have us redo it, bring it back as separate, I mean, what's before you is a resolution on all three of these recommendations.
So someone's going to have to move the...
Well, I move for reading of Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-four.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
I have to abstain, since I'm...
Yes.
I'm on Press Performing Arts Center Board.
Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with various organizations for requested funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax. Whereas the Mexico Tourism Commission recommends to city council that various organizations be allowed to receive tourism funding for their tourism advertising campaign, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Mexico Missouri as follows. Section one, that the city manager be authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Mexico with Missouri Life, Heart of Missouri Tourism Center, and Pressed Performing Arts Center for tourism funding. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. A move for passage of Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-four.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Abstain?
No.
Yes.
Next, new business ordinance we have is Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-five, an ordinance rezoning property located at ten ten South Calhoun, and amending the district map referred to in section fifteen dash one forty-two of the code of the city of Mexico Missouri zoning to R-three-B office and professional. And this is up for two readings by title only and passage.
Yes, Your Honor, we, uh, held the, uh, public hearing earlier this evening to rezone this, and, uh, council, if you have any additional questions, we would recommend that you proceed with the two readings by title only and passage of your ordinance.
No question?
I'm making motion, I read Bill number two thousand thirteen sixty-five, title only.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand thirteen sixty-five, an ordinance rezoning property located at ten ten South Calhoun, and amending the district map referred to in section fifteen, one forty-two of the code of the city of Mexico Missouri zoning to R-three-B office and professional. Move for second reading of Bill number two thousand thirteen sixty-five.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill number two thousand thirteen sixty-five, an ordinance rezoning property located at one, at ten ten South Calhoun, and amending the district map referred to in section fifteen, one forty-two of the code of the city of Mexico Missouri zoning to R-three-B office and professional. Move for passage of Bill number two thousand thirteen sixty-five.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next new business ordinance we have is Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-six, an ordinance amending chapter fourteen, article three, division one, section fourteen, fifty-nine, seven, prohibited waste, and chapter fourteen, article three, division four, section fourteen dash one twenty-three of the Mexico City Code relating to the sanitary sewer use charges. This is up for first reading by title only. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, earlier this evening, we did hold a public hearing, uh, regarding background future planning necessary for the wastewater treatment facility and collection system, and, uh, at this time, unless you have additional questions, we would just recommend you proceed at this time with first reading only, uh, by title only.
No questions, I'll move for first reading, uh, Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-six by title only.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-six, an ordinance amending chapter fourteen, article three, division one, section fourteen dash fifty-nine, subsection seven, prohibited waste, and chapter fourteen, article three, division four, section fourteen dash one twenty-three of the Mexico City Code relating to the sanitary sewer use charges.
Okay, the next bill, uh, we have is Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement amendment with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding project thirteen dash oh-three-eight A dash one airport improvement program. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Council, uh, approved, uh, the contract for runway improvements on eighteen thirty-six at, uh, the August twelfth meeting. Part of that meeting, council, remember, we, uh, it said that, we had to make sure that was, uh, subject to DOT funding, because it was, uh, a federal grant that was, uh, helping fund a great portion of this. The attached ordinance, uh, in amendment one outlines that grant breakdown at this time. The funding comes from three separate, uh, federal grant awards, or three different years. The, the first two years, it was a, uh, five versus ninety-five percent, you need ninety-five percent federal funds, five percent local funds, and in year three, they changed the funding formula, therefore it was a ninety-ten, ninety percent federal, ten percent local match. Therefore, the total match in this case will not exceed fourteen thousand three eighty-one. At the August meeting, I had estimated at that time, I thought, and, and reported to you, that it was going to be fifteen thousand one sixty-nine, so this is better than what we had estimated. Uh, the attached ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute the contract with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Federal funds are awarded to the city of Mexico in the amount of, uh, two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for the construction and labor of the crack ceiling and seal coating the portions of runway eighteen thirty-six, and remarking of the entire field. And as noted earlier, they represent, uh, the ninety-five percent of the eligible costs for year two thousand ten and eleven, and then at the ninety percent for the current year. The staff recommends that council proceed with the two readings by title only, and passage of the attached ordinance authorizing the execution of the contract with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. The ordinance has been posted as required at the time.
I move for first reading, Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-seven.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement amendment with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding project thirteen dash zero-three-eight A dash one airport improvement program, a move for second reading, Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-seven.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement amendment with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding project thirteen dash zero-three-eight A dash one airport improvement program, a move for passage of Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-seven.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes. Miller?
Okay, the last ordinance we have is bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant supplemental, supplement agreement number one with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for project thirteen dash oh three eight A dash one airport improvement program. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, this relates to the project that we just approved the funding for. The attached ordinance would authorize the execution of the supplemental agreement for the improvements of the airport. Council did approve the original agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly in February to accomplish the, to do the professional engineering services. The original agreement listed fourteen thousand as a lump sum, but actually the exhibit did list sixteen thousand for design. So the correct amount of the lump sum was intended to be sixteen thousand, the maximum payable of sixteen thousand nine hundred. Sixteen thousand, which covers labor costs and overhead of nine hundred. This supplemental agreement would make that correction. In addition, this agreement would also authorize Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly to perform construction inspection in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand on the improvements for the runway eighteen thirty-six. We have reviewed the qualifications of the firm, determined them to be the best qualified to accomplish this work. The proposed fees are considered to be fair and reasonable, and again, being covered as part of the grant funding. This would be for inspection services provided through the MoDOT federal grant and the local match. The attached ordinance would authorize the signing of a consultant supplemental agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. We would recommend you proceed with the two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance.
I move for first reading of bill number twenty thirteen dash sixty-eight by title only.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant supplement agreement number one with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for project thirteen dash zero three eight A dash one airport improvement program. I move for second reading of bill number twenty thirteen dash sixty-eight.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand thirteen dash sixty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant supplement agreement number one with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for project thirteen dash zero three eight A dash one airport improvement program. I move for passage of bill number twenty thirteen dash sixty-eight.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, under other business this evening, we have the claims. Any questions?
I move for she passes my yes.
Second.
Fox?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Next, we have council comments. Councilman Fox?
Well, I want to thank and commend Bruce and Roger and all the staff for what's always, I'm sure, a monumental task of putting the budget together. And you all do a great job. Thank you very much. Talking about tourism, I know we have several companies that attract a number of people from out of town. The most recent in my field of vision was, went to the, or I was out at the airport, the Zenith Open Hangar Day last weekend, and, or Days or whatever. And I counted cars from ten states and Canada. And it was, it was just unbelievable, and I'm sure I didn't get them all. But there were tons of people and from out of town, and it was really great, so. And I know that Goldcrest brings in a bunch, and Sid and Stricker, I don't wanna leave anybody, I'm not trying to name them all, but I know there are a bunch of them that, that bring a lot of people from out of town that, that do stay and do spend their money. And so we, we do have some tourism, but if tourism is defined by people coming from out of the area and spending their money here, so. Anyway, I think that's wonderful. That's all I have.
I commend the city for the budget. I know it's a lot of hard work, y'all did a really good job. I was gonna say something about Zenith as well. Maybe one of the things they can look at with the Missouri Life is putting some of these events. I mean, we focus on certain events, but I mean, Zenith, that's, that's what we put up with. Some of these businesses, the MMA, yeah, the MMA, they have events out there, and they, they never get mentioned in Missouri Life. And let's be honest, a lot of that money that's coming to us from lodging, probably the majority of it is coming from them. Their parents and family coming to stay here. I mean, if we didn't have MMA here, I don't know what our hotel business industry would be like, because they, they, I can tell you firsthand, every weekend, I've got people from all over the world up in here. I got people, hey, and I'm, just have conversations about Brazil, or Peru, or, you know, whatever, it works, so. A lot of, a lot of different places besides just what we would define as tours, they bring in a lot of people. So maybe that's something we can look at expanding to, including those people.
Good job on the budget also. Should've been booking all airplane tickets to Washington DC to help them with theirs. I have, I have a flat tire the other day, went to Miller's and got it fixed, and I noticed that they tore down the old tire shop, which looked nice. Excuse me. And they've also got plans to building a new office building, and have new employees, more employees, that I haven't heard from the ledger or the radio. Now they're, now they're referring by, anyway. It's nice when you got people like Goldcrest or them, or your own businesses, it's up to you.
Hard to follow that. Great job on the budget. A lot of last, and I think I've said it, the last two years, it's always better to be on this end of the budget than on the left, the other end of the budget. I know how it is. One, do we have an anticipated time when we're gonna start marking the parking places downtown?
I assume you mean in the lot, throughout the streets or both?
Streets.
Okay. Kenzie can go ahead and answer this, but we have, what, a thirty-day cure period you just like to go with?
We'd like to let it cure thirty days, and then otherwise the evaporation of the volatile bubbles that paint the asphalt pretty quick.
I don't suppose you have slides on that?
We could probably work something out.
Just. So we probably have about another three weeks?
Two to three weeks.
Well, about two weeks.
I've had some inquiries about it, and I just wanted to be able to answer. Any new word on the terrorist circle problem?
Yes.
Other than what you gave me?
Yeah, what was in the council brief last week is that we are looking at installing a drain, an intake within the cul-de-sac, and then a drain along with north side, which will solve most of the issues, we believe.
An inch drain there along the north side.
Is that gonna be of sufficient cost that we need to refine that for budget consideration?
We don't think so at this point. We think we can probably handle it within the budget that we've already set for stormwater improvements within the system this next year, so.
Okay, good. The other thing, Brick Brothers, when do they start their winter hours, Roger? Do you recall, is it October first, or is it November first?
November, I believe.
And that's, what are those hours?
It reduces back to weekends, basically.
Saturdays?
I was thinking it was Friday and Saturday, but it's.
You think we've got the month of October yet, though, before?
Yes.
Okay, all right. This is all I have. Mayor?
Bruce? Yes, Your Honor, I did receive this notification late last week, and so I am pleased to report that our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand twelve, once again qualifies for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment certainly by the city and council and this management team. And we are very honored to receive this award again. Roger, is this eighteen consecutive?
Twenty-three.
Okay, twenty-three consecutive years.
Roger, why don't you take a few days off and go fishing?
So, once again, we are very appreciative of that and the administrative services, Roger, all your work on that. This weekend, walk back in time, I think we've talked a little bit about it earlier, but full weekend of events on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so that's all I have here.
And with the chief, how are the locks working out?
Smooth, everybody qualifies with no friction whatsoever, and we're good to go.
Thank you.
Well, I too wanna congratulate everyone on the work on the budget. I know that's a big project, and it's good that we as a city can have a budget that's balanced and not have some of the issues that our surrounding communities have dealing with their budgets. I appreciate the opportunity, having been able to attend the MML conference last week. You always pick up a lot of ideas and things from talking to other communities around the country, around Missouri. One of the things I attended had to do with economic development, and they had some of these little booklets that I had got for each council member, and I thought you might find them of interest. They talk about all the different economic development programs that are available to our community in the state of Missouri, so. They had some extra copies there, so I grabbed them, and if somebody talks about chapter one hundreds, or chapter three fifty-three, or what are, or where all those numbers are, you'll kinda have an idea of what they, what they mean, so I thought that was good. But I appreciate the opportunity to, to have been able to attend that event. Okay, we're now ready for public comments. So come forward, state your name.
Hello, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Fellow citizens, my name's Clark Andelen.
And you live where?
I live at six twenty Woodlawn.
Okay.
Here in Mexico. My wife and I moved here a couple of years ago, and we've been, it's fun to come to an event like this and just, just hear about everyone trying to boost the, this community, and I'll say that it's a fantastic community, and it's been very, very wonderful to us, and we're struck by the wonderful people. We might have not, not have a tremendous amount in the way of tourism in those attractions, but the people make up for it in spades. I, I wish to speak about chickens and the chicken ordinance, and specifically a request that the chicken ordinance might be adjusted. Columbia in two thousand ten modified their chicken ordinance to make it so that, a few things, so that each tract of land in the city would allow up to six hens. No roosters, no ducks, no turkeys, just hens. And that it would have to be in enclosed space. I know we have a chicken ordinance now that where it has to be on an acre, and it has to be two hundred feet away from property lines. This only allows, I, I'm not sure what percentage of residences within the city limits have at least one acre of land, but that doesn't allow for very many people to allow that. This has been a successful program in communities throughout the U.S. I have here, if I can pass that just briefly, this is just a fact sheet about some of Columbia's chicken ordinance. But anyway, it just says, so six chickens, all hens, no other game. Obviously, wouldn't advocate to have donkeys and things like that, but, but we do allow for other animals, you know, dogs, for example. Chickens haven't really been shown to be terrible to many people. My, my wife, for example, refuses to live out in the country, out in the sticks like I've been demanding, basically. She won't let me, and so I'm trying to make, at least personally, a little farm paradise within the city limits. It's a wonderful animal to have, good for children to learn how to take care of, they provide eggs, meat. But anyway, they have it, it has to be ten feet away from property lines, twenty-five feet from adjacent residences, has to be clean and sanitary, there's some restrictions. All I ask is that a slight amendment to the current ordinance be changed. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions concerning that? Next.
Hi, my name is Jim Melandora, I live at five nineteen North Washington. I'm here to ask a couple of questions about the September fourteenth affair at Garfield Park that got complaints from all over the city through our Public Safety Department about the noise level. First of all, I wrote a letter to the editor, an open letter to the city, appeared in Tuesday's paper, and it, based on information I had at that time from the Department of Public Safety, the permit was issued for that affair by Parks and Recreation Department. I wanna know, is, is that who issued it? Can anyone tell me?
If you may. Sure, okay. First of all, the only permit that was issued for any event down there that weekend was a shelter reservation, which was, I think, similar to four or five other locations, the same weekend at other parks throughout the community. There was nothing provided to them that would give them any additional authority to violate any other laws of the city whatsoever beyond just having permission and the reservation for the shelter house.
So there was no permit for amplified music?
No, there was not.
Okay. I'd like to ask the council then, why should we allow one group of people who live in one part of the city, that the city itself is as dated as an area for subsidized housing? Why should we let those people disturb the peace and create a public nuisance for the rest of the citizens and taxpayers of Mexico? And I'd like to ask that, and I'd also like to have the city manager and the city attorney report an answer to that in public. And I would like to also suggest that the city review its noise ordinance and its Parks and Recreation Department controls to ensure that public music, or amplified music should not be played after dark. It can be as simple as after dark, and you, you develop the permit system based on the time of the year and where daylight savings time falls. Those are my questions.
Sure, some will have, okay. First of all, if there are any events, community events, and of course, this was not, would have been considered as such, there is a special use permit that is granted, and there is a process for that that they go through. And that would be something that would be similar to like the soybean festival, or whatever else that they may have. And in those cases, they are given permission, and basically to have, you know, music, whatever, you know, in essence, allowed beyond the noise ordinance or whatever else. That was not the case here. Now, and I wanna be careful when I say, and I don't certainly wanna use any terms in regards to what parts of the community or whatever else. And in this particular case, they took it completely up on themselves to do the things that they did down there. Now, they had asked for additional picnic tables because they had indicated that they had a larger family event that they were having, and that, you know, that was granted as well. I was aware of that there were actually two complaints that were received at Public Safety that were documented complaints, and that Public Safety was, in, in their reports, were down there on a number of occasions throughout the day, and didn't feel that there were any issues that was worth changing at the time. But when the music did get louder, and I believe that was roughly at nine o'clock or so in the evening.
That's six p.m.
That they did shut it down at that point, and that was one of the matter of about ten or fifteen minutes from that time. And now, in some people's opinion, should it have been earlier? You know, maybe it should have, but I, I'm just going off of their reports and their opinions that they had felt that it was a managed event until that time.
My information came from Lieutenant Steen, who called me back after three different, three different complaints, but I, I personally called him.
I'm not familiar with. Because Lieutenant Schmidt was working that night, and I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading from his report, so.
Okay.
The information that I have.
He explained to me that after they received numerous complaints, he went back and rechecked the statutes and found the nine p.m. limitation.
And they shut it down at that time.
They shut it down at that point. But we're talking about, you know, two hours of evening shot. You know, and I'm of the age, gentlemen, where cool evenings in the fall are pretty precious, and I don't take kindly to having them disrupted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll add this to that, two things. One is vehicles driving in the park, are they, they're not supposed to be, are they? Personal vehicles down in the park, they're not supposed to be in there, are they? Because when I drove by, they were all over, they were parked in the park. So I don't know why we didn't enforce that, I would say. I don't know why that never got enforced, because they weren't like moving around, they were parked down there. Because I, because I made a phone call after that, because I was like, what's going on? Just out here, I was like, what's going on in the park? And they said, oh, it's park day. Like, okay. So that's one issue, I think. But another issue I would say is the, the loudness of the music, because I, you know, we, we talk about, we issue special use permits to downtown, but those don't get that loud. talk about, we issue special use permits to downtown, but those don't get that loud. I mean, and, and your event is one event, but I mean, I live on Jackson and from the park to my house is a little over a quarter mile and I hear them a lot. And, you know, I think it's kind of, you know, if we can't, so you can drive down the road, but if I hear your music driving down the road over a hundred feet from your car or whatever it is, I can pull you down and I can give you a ticket, but I can hear your music if it's just sitting on the ground, I can hear your music a half a mile away and that's perfectly fine. I don't, I don't see how we regulate the two there. I don't have, mind them having events down there, but I think there has to be some kind of give and take there, decibel levels or whatever we need to do.
And, and I want to be clear when I talk about a special event, it can happen in other places besides downtown.
Yeah, no, yeah.
But it's a community event and, and, you know, I'd make, you know, the comment that we've had them at, you know, the high school and different places and, you know, parades can be considered the same thing with bands and whatever else. This one was not that issue, should have never been to that issue and probably should have been shut down sooner than it was. And those issues are being discussed with the parks and with Public Safety in regards to how they should handle such things in the future because the calls that we did receive, you know, the complaints we did, but I also heard from a couple of other citizens, you know, that said, yeah, it was an issue even though they didn't call in. And so, they are addressing those issues and how they will handle those in the future because if it is not a community sponsored public event like that, they should not, if you will, been allowed to go to that extent that they were, whether it be from vehicles, whether it be music, whatever else. And so, they are reviewing their policies now to take a look at how that will be dealt with in the future.
What, what about the nine o'clock? Does it need to be moved forward? Is that something that?
That's an issue we haven't discussed at the staff level at this point. I guess we have felt that the nine o'clock issue was always a fairly standard issue. We can certainly look at that as well, but.
Well, I think nine o'clock, I mean, I don't have anything against nine o'clock, but I think, you know, we're talking about how loud.
Right.
You know, nine o'clock, nine o'clock where I can hear you in my two block radius.
Six, six-thirty when I can't watch the Cardinals game.
Nine o'clock when I can hear you a half mile away, that's a little different.
And I think that's also part of the ordinance on how far, how, you know, how far it reaches out, and I think we will be looking at that as well.
And how, okay.
Leslie?
Thank you.
As memory serves, Lou can direct me into a court soon. I think that ordinance says it's from six a.m. to nine a.m. and that allows for construction work and so forth in the city also. You can't differentiate from that ordinance what's noise of a jackhammer and what's noise of, or something else, so there has to be an allowance for that. And secondly, if we moved it to six-thirty, then we might have violations at six, so, you know, it would be chasing the clock backwards. I don't, I think that there just has to be some common sense level of when it gets to a certain point, you shut it down if it's four o'clock, five o'clock.
We, we do have decibel reading equipment now that can read, that can tell you.
I think it's mentioned in the ordinance, in fact. But that allows for that decibel limit not to be reached until nine o'clock, if it's not reached until nine, or if it's reached prior to nine o'clock, the ordinance specifically allows it for the very reasons I've just explained, for construction work, jackhammers.
I couldn't, I couldn't do that at my house.
Well, no, but a construction crew that was working at your house could do that.
Not after dark, they wouldn't be working.
They, yes, sir, I understand that, but they could technically by the ordinance until nine o'clock. And that's how they could do it.
At seven o'clock in the morning.
And I have that happen in my neighborhood with roofers, so I know.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
That's why I suggested the dusk.
Right.
Rule, which can move during the year.
Sure.
With the clock.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
I just think it's all about how loud. I just think, you know, if, if, at that park in particular, I think if you, if they can hear it in that park and you can hear it in their neighborhood, they're okay, but if I can hear it past like, you know, Holt Street, you know, then I think we're, we need to be like, okay, you know, tone it down.
There has to be some kind of a common sense idea that it's just too loud, but that's subjective as, and I don't know that we can make a law based on the subjectivity of who thinks what's too loud where.
Yeah, that's why you're going to have, just like the car, I think you're going to do just like the car.
Hundred and fifty.
Or, yeah, a hundred and fifty might be a little strict for outside, but, you know, there's got to be some, I think you've got to have some kind of limit like that if you want to really enforce it because otherwise it's just open to interpretation.
But I would just explain to basically the, the background of what the law is now and, and why it was, the framers had, had framed it the way they did.
Any other comments? Bruce, will you be following up on this? Is there any other questions we have on this?
Is that one more?
Oh, yes, sir.
Are the gentleman at the dump, the brush dump, going to ever grind any brush? We're about to the point where we can't turn a trailer around.
Right. Ralph, they were already supposed to have been in there already before now. We have had communications with them the last week. Kenzie, I think they're indicating that they're going to try to be here late this week or next week, but.
The end of the month is what they say.
Okay.
Are they going to grind at all or are they just going to grind a little nibbing of it?
Well, we've asked them certainly to grind, you know, as, as much as possible because as we've already discussed at the parks, we have a number of trees that will be coming down just because of the typical drought as well as the number of trees that have, you know, just die typically. So, we have a large number that's going to be needing to come back in there.
Well, I think the whole community is.
But the other issue that we have there is those pallets and we addressed that with them during the contract renewal that those need to be out of there as well.
Those are still there.
Yes.
And they're right up to the building with the, with the brush. I know that goes out to.
Yeah, it's whole.
You can get a ten foot trailer turned around, but you, well, you can, depends on how you go and what you do.
But yes, we're aware of it.
You can get a sixteen foot in there, but man, it's getting tough.
Yeah, we are aware of it and we've addressed it with them already.
I just wondered, I, I didn't know.
Do we have any penalty sets in that contract or?
There, there are issues that we can deal with on, from a penalty point of view.
Any other comments? If not, I move adjourned. Second.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.